I'll call the January 16th, 2019 Franklin Township Board of Supervisors meeting at 7:07. In attendance are Supervisors Deish Torres, David is not here. Also in attendance are Solicitor Mark Thompson, Harvard Historical Commission Chairman Paul Lagasse, Township Manager Joan McLaw, and Assistant Township Manager Jeff Eastburn, and Secretary Sharon Norris. And they're approximately three members of the public here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For any public comment? Section Public Comment? Is anything related to tonight's agenda? Public comment is for items... The last public comment is for items on tonight's agenda. It's important you state your name clearly for the tape and your comments can be reflected accurately. Please state whether you're a township resident or a township taxpayer. Any public comments? Okay. Having none? Do have a representative from the Pennsylvania State Police here this evening, so if you have any questions about their service, which township is entirely satisfied with that service. Does anybody here, does any complaints about what's been provided down here? Okay. You want to start the first one?
Sure. So I make a motion to approve December 19th, 2018 Meeting Minutes, Version 2, as presented by the Township Secretary.
I'll second it.
That's only three of us. A lot of work here. Thank you. So any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments here.
Do you want to just... Did you mark it up?
I marked it, but I'll find it.
Okay.
It's really... It's on the area we refer to Natasha Manbeck. It says "An Engineer with McMahon Associates." Should be "Engineer and Planner." Planner is an important function to provide, so it's just a minor correction.
So you want to add planner to after engineer?
Yeah, engineer and planner.
Okay, so that's like the fifth mark.
Yeah, she's got PE and she's got strong planning credentials, also all those certifications.
Okay.
Uh, let's see.
Any other?
Uh, the only other thing, just a discussion about that last item, two women's, Dowling and Hudson, want to hear about the property on Peacedale Road where they're concerned about wetlands and steep slopes. And I looked at the Google or TurnOn Wetlands, I didn't see any wetlands. Joan, you did some research also, because...
I checked with LTL and I checked with Chester County, and there's no wetlands.
No wetlands?
On the property.
There's no steep slopes, there's really nothing on that property, other than you would have to have a suitable perp test for it. Okay, so does that stand?
Okay, great. So we'll make that one change, Joan, okay?
Yeah, that's just the one.
And then when we get back to the... On this Dowling and Hudson, if you'll let it know, we found out, because I thought we told them you were gone. Okay. All right, so all in favor of these amendments with the changes, Joan, discussed? Say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, so 3, 2, 0.
Okay. I make a motion to Board Supervisors adopt Resolution 2019-05 regarding the disposition of records for the Board Supervisors' meeting of December 19th, 2018. Second by Stephanie. This motion just allows us to erase the audio tape once we've approved the minutes from the meeting. One second.
There's a debate, Joan?
Next?
Oh, that's okay. Do we have to vote on all of them?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries 3, 0. Okay.
I make a motion that the Board approve the December Treasuries Report, which includes bond dispersments, the general fund with dispersments and transfers of $392,785.42, Parks and Recreation Fund with dispersments of $1,526.80, the Heaven Space Fund with dispersments of $6,768.42, Emergency Services Fund with dispersments of $53,930.62, Fire Hybrid Fund with dispersments of $580.80, leaving the balance in all funds totaling $765,917.33.
I'll second that, Stephanie.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Donna. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries 3, 0. Donna, I want you to do the audio report, then I'll be the next three.
Okay, sounds good. So December zoning officers' report, the motions are needed, but you just don't look at the public note. Permits issued were seven, building inspections were 26, building fees collected were $10,426.65, recreation, open space impact fees collected were $14,909.00, and miscellaneous fees collected were $5,425. And there was six zoning issues reported. And Joan, you should give us an update on them, and I was going to ask Mark a question on one. So do you want to do the quick update, or am I going to ask Mark a question?
Okay, the 207 Highland, they put the stockade fence in the front yard, that's been lowered to 48 inches, so that meets our 30 requirements. 223 Highland Drive, stormwater complaint. Jeff Vogels is still trying to get the engineering firm to sign off on that to make sure that it's had the correct measurements, so that we're still waiting on. 1651, that gentleman came in and filed the application for the zoning hearing board, so that would be scheduled. 3327 Appleton Road, that is scheduled, has been rescheduled, the hearing in Court of Common Pleas has been rescheduled to February 12th, and there's also a hearing in the District Court for new violations, scheduled February 21st.
Is that the third time that has been stated or rescheduled?
It was, the Court of Common Pleas was rescheduled twice, once by us, because it was right the day before. I mean, something around the border, Thanksgiving, yeah. And then he asked that it be rescheduled, because he lost his attorney, he had to get a new one. So that... But the case in District Court has just, this is the first time that's been scheduled.
Yeah, we did not push these off, it has not been my office. The only issue was, it was the day before Thanksgiving, it was the original hearing, and all the, everyone involved in the case was traveling, so that we haven't, I'll say, a judge that doesn't necessarily schedule things on days that he thinks people will be available, so. But we're not pushing those off, we want to have a hearing in those cases.
Okay, 1620 London Road, I'm going to let Mark talk about that in a minute. 206 Box 1, that property is being offered for sale for $69.9 with the foundation and what we made to the house.
The bank owns it now?
Yes.
The bank's.
And they're offering it for $69.9.
Okay.
So, so Mark, with the 1620 London, I looked at the update to say that the application received in January to be a good thing, but I just...
Partially, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I want to hear about, the other portion, because I am expecting them to come back and talk to us. I mean, I'm not prejudging what the outcome will be, but I think there was a lot of, lack of, more clarity needed all around, that it would be worthwhile to have them come in and have a conversation with us.
Well, Jeff Vogels did write a letter late last year, in the fall, indicating that he did not have a permit for the use on the property, and also indicating that he needed to come back in for a revised conditional use application. He responded in November, there was an argument that he felt like he didn't need a revised conditional use, but that he applied for the permit. The permit that Jeff Vogels will be issuing only allows for the CDL trucks, so that's the distinction that we obviously have the issue with. We will, we, Jeff and Joan and I had a long conversation yesterday, and we're issuing a communication to him indicating that if he doesn't do something in the next two weeks, then we're going to take whatever enforcement action we have.
We just want to talk to him, just come in.
Well, I mean, I think the issue is, we need to have, he needs to resubmit a conditional use application. If we just want him to come in and talk...
Okay, so then my words are wrong, right?
Well, that was what Jeff had originally said in his correspondence. The conditional use, which allowed for the CDL trucks to be parked on the property, if he just wants to park trucks and have no regulations relating to them, like the ones that were related to the CDL trucks, then he needs to come back in for a revision to that conditional use, because that's not something we contemplate.
Right.
Now, whether he does it or not, I can't tell you whether or not he's going to agree with that. The correspondence we have from him was not necessarily in agreement with that assessment. But I think, like I told you back in December, when I had a conversation with him, it might have been November, he was not orientated and said, "Listen, I'll do whatever you guys want us to do, we just, you know, we think we have a right to it, but if that's what we have to do, that's what we'll do."
Okay, so, as I said, I don't know what the answer is going to be the other day, but you know, talking to Joe, this process was not perfect from the beginning, and it would be helpful for him to restate his case, for us to ask some questions, and then come to an understanding, whatever that is. So, I hear you're right, Mark, if something doesn't happen within the next two weeks, then you're going to ratchet it up.
We have to, yeah.
I appreciate that.
We also found a noise violation applicable to the property, I believe, a gentleman attached up to the email, was a notice violation that was issued by Jeff Vogels two years ago, that I don't believe anybody appealed. So we might be able to explore that as an issue too.
Now, we just hope that we can come to some kind of conclusion that, I guess not everybody is always going to be happy, but at least some clarity to it, that we're all speaking, we all know where we're at.
We're trying to get there.
All right, all right, so stay on it, I appreciate that.
We are on it.
Mark, when you say "he," I just want to confirm, are you referring to Jason or Gary?
The father.
Okay.
Since he was his attorney, so to speak, he's the only one that I've communicated with.
Okay. I would think you'd get more of an answer better.
I'm only allowed to contact his attorney, and I mean, I think his father was active as attorney. A very pleasant person to deal with. Unfortunately, we have a situation we need to straighten out, so.
Okay. All right, I'll just do the next three here. Planning Commission did not meet in January. Paul Lagasse will present summary of the January of 2019 Historical Commission and HARB meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On January 8th, the Franklin Township Historical Commission met, and we again elected our officers. This year, the chairman, who was elected, myself, the vice-chairman is Nan Laddimer, and the secretary is Sarah Beth Kovat. All of us, for our own opposed and for elected unanimously. We then turned our attention to a brief discussion of the progress concerning the 896 roadwork, where our main focus was actually on the cultural assessments made concerning properties along the 896. Specifically, we were talking about the Clara Palan Hall Inn, which is Gallegan property, and also the Cavender House, which is the house that is across from, it's between the school and the church on the 896. It used to be Joan Lawrence's senior and actually son, if there are two. And we had responded to the assessments, as typical in my sense, because with the cultural assessments, the recommendations from the reviewers have been that the properties are not eligible for the National Historical Register. In these two cases, particularly because of their closeness to the road, and also because of the Historical Associations who made the response, Karen Marshall also, who is the Chester County Heritage Preservation Officer, and she's with the Planning Commission, concurred with us in our response concerning the Palan Hall Inn, and we basically asked the assessment of that property to be refocused on its importance to the township as an inn, the assessment had focused on the best of the farm. As for the Cavender House, the property search that had been done was incomplete, brought information to the attention of the Project PATH folks, that the house is associated with the properties that led to the naming of the township after Ben Franklin, there were properties that passed with Ben Franklin's ownership from Georgia, Cleveland had a tavern on the property, and it is quite possible that the oldest portion of the Cavender House is one of the earliest buildings in the township, and may date from that time. It's rated as circa 1800, but that's just an estimate based on looking at coming outside. Then we reviewed the discussion that occurred here with Natasha Manbeck, the previous supervisor's meeting on December, concerning walkable village and residents' concerns about traffic safety, and we noted that really both of these things are an issue for us, that they go hand in hand, that it's our feeling that if we can create a situation where the traffic slows down, and people are able to walk, that will also help to reduce the way the traffic sort of carries through the village currently, and that the, in fact, we believe that an interest in a walkable village is a good justification for encouraging Penda to drive the speed limits lower in the village, that it could work hand in hand with making it a safer village, as we wish for that. Then we reviewed the Churchill African Cemetery issue. This is a small cemetery that's up near Churchill Road in the township, a northern part of the township. And basically, for the moment, the issue is on hold. I intend to attempt to do deed search in the Chester County Archives, probably in February, or a little later, when I have the time, to see if I can discover any evidence of any transfer of property from either the corporation or one of the trustees of the corporation to another property owner. In the absence of that, it's clear that, becomes clear that as far as we know, the property is abandoned, and it has no current ownership. And at that point, once that's clear, I will recontact the neighboring property owners, who are the larger parcel that surrounds it, to let them know the results of my search. We've had some discussions about the ownership, and there was some feeling that they might have ownership of the property in the park, but this is not backed up by anything in the county records, which I pointed out today.
Does the property have a partial number to it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Property has a partial number, it's included, delineated, and there's really, the only quote-unquote owner of record is the Churchill Cemetery, which is not, you know...
So nobody's paying taxes on it, obviously.
And it's been there, the last, I did make one minor discovery, that there's evidence, if I could believe what I'm seeing on top graph from that in the late 1890s, that there was just a, there was a church in that location that late. We don't know how late there was a church there, we do know that the last burial in the cemetery was in the 1890s.
It's actually interesting, isn't it? It's...
It's interesting, and I'm just trying to, you know, handle this in a manner respectful of the complications associated with it.
Such as cemetery.
Do you know what the partial number is here?
Hmm...
Can you, just drop me an email.
Is it like, it's like 733 or 723?
Tell me 72.
7233 or 7223, maybe?
I can email to you.
All right, just my email.
It's something like that. It's, it's, it's less than a half acre, it's listed as a point four. But there are, according to the death certificate on file, some 70 burials.
Seven.
Yeah, there are not that many headstones that are visible, but that the headstones aren't necessarily the number that...
All right. Okay. Paul, just going back briefly for the Cavender and the Gallegan House, if there were, if there was a status change on those properties to make them more historical by Historical Commission, would that at all affect?
No.
Penda?
You know, I mean, it doesn't, if, this is a judgment ultimately made by the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission, based on the evidence that is compiled by the reviewers, and sent to them by other people such as myself and Karen Marshall, that the property is or is not eligible for the National Register. And eligibility is not the same thing as actually getting on it. That's a bigger hurdle, because they'll go into things like the state of the interior and other fine details, but eligibility is a general assessment of the property in terms of involving things like how little it's altered, whether it's representative of its historical place and that sort of thing. So it's a complicated judgment, and, you know, there's no, there's nothing that we could particularly do, except bring forward evidence that we believe justifies.
If there was a historical structure, and accepted as a historical structure, that would not affect Penda's ability to widen the coverage?
Well, okay, so, there's several things. First off, just by the fact of being historical, doesn't mean anything. So when you get to the question of whether it's eligible for the National Register, then it ultimately, it does not preclude Penda for doing what it might feel is essential if it could justify it, but it definitely complicates the process and permits more input from the property owner, and provides more protections, but only because the 896 roadwork is a federally funded project. This is all related to federal legislation governing federally funded projects. So it's a really, there are like many levels of this, and it's taken me a few years to get this sort of out of my head. So, I mean, there are a lot of historic properties in this township that could be in good shape, but could have been altered in various ways through additions and things, that they would not be considered as a result eligible. There are, in some cases, because places are extremely significant, that you could have a ruin, and it would be considered eligible for the National Register, as is the case with the, what's left of the church where the Women's Rights Convention was held in Center for Falls, we were up there, and that was very eye-opening. They don't have the whole building, at one point that building became a car dealership, and so what they tried to do was preserve what survived, but it's a national historic site nonetheless. So it all depends on the level of significance and the state of the structure, but no one element controls it. So, we will be in the process of, we also reviewed talks and training opportunities, there was a talk last night at Oxford that I didn't get a chance to go to, but Catalyst on our list, and that is the Visionary World of Humphrey Marshall. Humphrey Marshall is a colonial artist and artist, who was actually born in Manchester, from Chester County. He was supposed to have talked, and the talk is given by Adrian Martinez, who's an also local artist. And then we'll be preparing our annual report, and we also, which will probably not, because of the way we tend to meet, come to your attention until April. And then we finalized arrangements for combining the Historical Commission and HARB meetings over the going forward. We'll have one joint sitting, and we'll figure out, you know, we can sort of divide most of the things, but we have a lot of members in common, it's kind of superfluous to hold two meetings. Unless we have, the other day issue will be if we have a subjective, appropriate interpretation, and then we will arrange the meeting appropriately. Following that meeting, the HARB met, and we elected our officers, yours truly was elected chairman again, Lou Mandich was elected vice-chairman, and Tracy Schreiner was elected secretary. These were, which were previous elections, again, and unopposed. And we also talked about a number of the issues that we reviewed, such as the 896 roadwork and walkable village, and annual reports combined meetings, which is another reason why we want to combine meetings. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's see. Just related to the last meeting we had, we talked about tickles and potential improvements here. Natasha Manbeck, the engineer and planner, is a star from my standpoint. She provided a tremendous amount of information about planning, and she obviously knows her engineering. I started taking notes and I couldn't keep up with her, so I need to go back and look at that tape, because she spilled out a tremendous amount of information in there. So that ought to be collected, and if I get a chance, I'll do that, get that out there. So I was thoroughly impressed with her credentials. I think the outcome of that meeting is that we need to write some kind of scope of work for her of this study, clear, a clear scope of work, and we realized that without understanding what Penda's going to do with the intersection out here, we really couldn't do that. So the path forward was to find out what Penda was up to, and we have just scheduled a meeting with them on the 25th of this month, 10 to 12 here. So that's Friday, that's Friday.
Just a little. I have a ganser. So not only will my arm end up in a half-cast, but I'm going to be rather drugged up.
Okay.
Oh, jeez.
It's all right.
We'll take big notes. She knows so much about this.
One of the key points, and you may want to give us some input, I mean, we either call up a plan that slows traffic or stops it.
Yeah.
Well, in my mind, the last time we talked, we thought we had to stop traffic.
Right.
Because there just isn't any way to control the speed coming around that curve, so a three-way stop would not be very pleasant for most people, but it seems to be the only reasonable solution to the traffic issues that we have here. The basic issue is trucks coming northbound cannot stay in our lane going around that turn, so they're just always on the other side of the street. The fact that we have relatively few accidents is almost a miracle in my mind, seeing what goes on out there. So, that's going to be part of the discussion, so if you have some input to that.
Well, let me, let me write something up, and send it to the Supervisors, send to Joan, and so that you all have a copy. Just sort of summarizing my thoughts, which I think are concurred, meaning by most part of the Historical Commission. You know, I'm not coming out on a limb, I'm a company employee, so. But yeah, I could certainly do that, but yeah, I'm going to be, I may not even be back yet from surgery.
I mean, the intersection is problematic in every respect, there isn't enough land really to do anything here.
No, I mean, really what would have been the best thing years ago would have been been to, um, try and bypass the village at, when, you know, some of that land was still open farmland.
Back about four or five years ago, Representative Lawrence really made some effort to, uh, talk to the people that owned the Echo Bell master property to find a bypass, but it was unsuccessful. So, um, there just doesn't seem to be that solution here.
Yeah, well, at this point, I think that would be.
I mean, if you look at the ideal bypass, the one in Strasburg is perfect.
Yeah.
But that was a huge project.
Right. It is, it is a huge project and they're, they're not, they're definitely not funded for doing anything like that with respect to this.
No.
But I, I do sometimes wonder if perhaps as part of the overall project, if, um, we couldn't perhaps enable Pendot into doing some of its own assessment of the feasibility of a walkable village and at least so far as to make sure that what they do doesn't preclude it.
Well, if you, um, if we end up stopping the traffic, that would make, uh, a crosswalk pretty, pretty safe. Cause I'm sure you can cross this highway.
But we would also need, you know, marked, real marked crosswalks. We need to make sure there's space, for example, for that kind of thing. Um, and at various times, I know they've talked about, or, or had some plans, they're not always been in every plan that's come before us, but for, um, Gateway Island, um, at either end of the village. And I think that even if there are stop signs, uh, Gateway Islands are a good idea.
Oh, I still think that, I still think that's a good idea.
Because it will prevent.
It would slow the traffic entering and stopping.
It would also give people pulling away from the stop signs, something to slow them down so that you're not, this, for example, if you're leaving, um, Catalyst book to the south, that you know it's not tempted to accelerate straight out of village because you're going to have to jog your way around to the island, um, before you.
All right, but anyway, if you have input, you might want to write some stuff down.
Yes.
For that, I'm sorry about your hand surgery.
It's, uh, it's necessary.
That's all right.
And ongoing, you know, I'll probably have a second one for the other hand later.
Okay. Any other comments? Steve Roger? All right. Mr. Jim German of the Franklin Township Sportsman Association will present the Franklin Township Sportsman Association's monthly report.
Thank you. Really not a lot to report this month. Um, membership is unchanged. Hunting seasons, extended season this part of the state is still open and will close officially the twenty-sixth of January. However, there will be shots heard, I'm sure, around the township because goose season will be in. I see over here on Ford Farm, there's a blind out in the middle of the field and also down on the, uh, Thomas Farm there, off of Sturker's Hill, I see a blind out there, so I'm sure we'll start to hear some shooting there. Usually that tends to take place first thing in the morning.
Yep. I, I got a farmer that pays people that hunt next to me, so we're.
Okay. So just more for the township to know if they get complaints, shots or something, after then that's where that's coming from. Um, all the parcels, I have not heard any issues or actions taking place there. Um, since the last meeting, three more deer have been taken, um, two in Franklin and one in Banishire.
Okay.
Um, and any upcoming activities from a service project is sometime this first quarter will be scheduling neighborhood cleanup, uh, around Chesterville and Creek.
We haven't had any issue, we haven't heard any complaints, have we, John?
No.
We haven't got, the only issue we had is Paul Smiley guy.
Yeah, Paul already guy, yeah, harassment down there.
But he was legally down there, not legally hunted.
Yeah, I thought it was good because the feedback that he cast on to us is that he produced the permission to hunt, his, his parking permit showed him the, the sign-in board down there where he'd hang your tag to explain to all officers the process that this happens here, it happens in Banishire, it happens, you know, the other side. So hopefully we should have any more issues going forward.
Well, thank you for your report and thank you for the community services you provide. We sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Are you ready? All right, Mark, I think you're going to open this up?
I am.
All right.
So tonight we have a hearing on amendment to the Township zoning ordinance. It's ordinance number two thousand nineteen oh one. Um, specifically, uh, the ordinance amends, uh, the regulations concerning additional dwelling units, adds a definition of that term, eliminates references to, uh, accessory dwelling units throughout the zoning ordinance and has a new section, twenty-seven seventeen two one, uh, called additional dwelling units. Um, because this is an ordinance that was enacted pursuant to the procedures of the municipality's planning code and we're having a hearing, we're going to mark some exhibits for the hearing. Uh, the ordinance itself will be exhibit T-one. Uh, the public notice that was provided to the day of little news was exhibit T-two. The proof of publication, uh, which we usually get late, but we actually have the, the notices themselves, um, being in the newspaper, uh, is exhibit T-three. And a December fourth, two thousand eighteen review letter of the Chester County Planning Commission, uh, of the ordinance is exhibit T-four. Um, the ordinance was, uh, pretty well thoroughly vetted by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. I would note for the record that there was a minor change. Um, it did refer to section nine oh four as being deleted. Uh, that was a section that should have referred to nine oh four point three, uh, rather than the entire section nine oh four, um, which referenced granny flats and mother-in-law suites. Um, we also did change, there were two references to nine oh four and that the one reference was changed to section sixteen fifteen. Again, this was just the effort to eliminate all the references to accessory dwelling units in the ordinance so that we refer to the correct sections. It has no, uh, relevance towards the review of the Chester County Planning Commission and has no relevance to, uh, the additional dwelling unit regulations that are being provided for it, seventeen twenty-one, nor the addition, but I'm going to make a note for the record. So with that, if the board would like to comment, anyone from the audience would like to comment, this would be, uh, the appropriate time.
Open for public comments.
Sure. Anyone have any comments to the ordinance? This has been kicked around for several months now.
Well, yeah, the Planning Commission put, put an enormous amount of effort into this ordinance. They had about, what, how many meetings, five meetings or so?
At least back and forth.
Developing this ordinance for alternate living units and mother-in-law suites and the previous ordinance we had really was, uh, not well-written. It was provisions of it were scattered around our ordinance book, so they're not easy to, uh, apply and has been misinterpreted a number of times in application. So I was, one of the key objectives is to get it all in one document so that when someone wanted to do this, that document covered the entire process and we have done that. And we put some additional restrictions into the thing about, um, uh, the amount of land you would need to put a second house on this thing, Marshall. So, um, that limitation wasn't in there before. It's three and a half acres is the minimum that you would need to put another unit on that, on a property. And we, um, correctly, we also got a response letter from Chester County saying, uh, it was an affirmative letter, so to speak, right? Yeah, they strongly supported it because I had, then I attended Cato meetings in Bryan O'Leary, the, he's, I guess, the CEO of the Planning Commission was very supportive of it in the time we were working on it, so. I, I think it's good ordinance, it's a big upgrade from where we are, clearly defines the limits now, so I'm, I'm happy with it.
Yeah, there was a recommendation in the December fourth letter, it's that the Planning Commission supports the proposed zoning ordinance amendment and that the amendment can help increase additional housing options in the township.
It's fully aligned with their landscapes three, uh, comprehensive plan for the county and that's why they endorse it.
Quick question, with three board members, uh, the vote has to be three oh, right?
Yes, it does, yeah, because we only, we just barely have a forum, three people here tonight, so.
That is correct.
So I don't have any other comments, so.
Is there any other comments? Unless the board has something further, they want to say, why don't we close the hearing in the matter and we'll adjourn back to the regular meeting so the board can make a decision.
John, so this is to you, step ahead?
It's, oh.
Make a mention.
It's up to me, yep, okay. Uh, okay. I make a motion that the board enact ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero one, the additional dwelling unit ordinance.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donna. Discussion. We have beat this thing up from here, so I'm not sure if there's really much more we can say about it, so.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, say nay. Motion carries three to zero.
We're good. Thank you, Nancy. Shane Morgan was going to be here tonight to talk about the Catch the Rain program, but for some reason she didn't show up, so we'll just skip over that. Uh, the last item on the agenda is this referendum discussion. It's not a motion, but something the board has been entertaining for the last three meetings. So just for the public that didn't know, Franklin Township is a dry township. Cannot sell alcoholic beverages in Franklin Township. I didn't know that up until about three or four years ago when some inquiry reporter called me and said, why is it a dry township? Which I didn't know, but, um, it was, uh, after the prohibition was appealed in nineteen thirty-three, then, uh, the state gave Townships an option to maintain the provisions of the prohibition, which they did by voter referendum. And it was reaffirmed again in nineteen sixty-seven by voter referendum. So since then, we have been a dry township. But over the years, uh, we've had various inquiries and potential opportunities for restaurants and other, other businesses and they really don't go anywhere because this dry township thing, uh, limits their ability to get a liquor license. So the board as a group, five of us, there are only four, three of us here this evening, agreed that we'd like to try to remove this limitation to promote, uh, economic improvement on our township. And the plan is to start with a letter to residents indicating that's our objective. I think that's the only way that we could inform the public as to what our intentions are. And the task, um, we've worked on this letter a bit and our attorneys just put the final touches on it, so, um, this is the final one, right? The fundamental things that has to be done to change this ordinance is you need to get it on the, uh, the May, uh, primary ballot. And the process is similar to, um, putting candidate on the ballot. You have to go to solicit signatures from residents. And in this case, um, we need five hundred and fifty of the signatures, which is an enormous task to gain that many signatures in a period of time from February nineteenth and March twelfth. And the reason it's that many is the requirement is that you have to have twenty, twenty-five percent of the people that voted in the last election, which is over, well over two thousand, twenty-five percent of that is five hundred and fifty-eight, so that's what's required just to, uh, put it on the ballot. And then if we're successful there, then the voters can actually vote directly for it. So the letter will probably go out of the township sometime next week. I think Nancy's, uh, out of town right now and I really want her input before I make any copies.
She needs to sign it before we can print the copies.
She needs to sign it also, but I mean, she's, I think she's in agreement, but I just want to make sure that everything is totally agreeable to all of us before we put this letter out. So that's the plan. The letter also, um, solicits help. In fact, it'd probably be worthwhile just reading it. Uh, dear residents, Franklin Township is dry. I know that this may be hard to believe, but Franklin Township has been dry since the end of prohibition, nineteen thirty-three, and then reaffirmation in nineteen sixty-seven, Franklin Township voted to remain dry, a dry township, prohibiting the sale of alcoholic beverages at restaurant or retail outlet located within the township. Current township prohibition does not include locally produced wine and beer sold at breweries and wineries that may be located in the township. These establishments are agriculture in nature and they grow their own ingredients, need to produce the alcoholic beverages they sell. So why change now? Board of Supervisors supports changing the township's dry status in order to foster economic development in the township. The board would like to see our local community continue to flourish with the growth of small businesses such as restaurants and shops, proving our tax base is also an objective. This is one small way to generate additional income for the township without the challenges associated with large-scale development, including building of big commercial establishments. Uh, this is an important point, this one. How many liquor licenses can be anticipated? If the liquor, if the limitation on the sale of alcoholic beverages were removed, only one liquor license would be promoted, permitted by right. The board of supervisors would then have direct control over any subsequent licenses, assuring local control of the number of establishments that could be located in the township. What needs to be done? Removal of township's dry status requires the approval of majority of residents via voter referendum. A petition of at least five hundred and fifty-eight signatures from registered voters in the township will be needed, submitted to Chester County Voter Services in order to place the referendum on the May two thousand nineteen ballot, at which point a majority of votes in favor of which will change the status. Signatures for the petition must be collected between February nineteenth and March twelfth. How can you help? If you support this change, we need your help to canvass the neighborhood for signatures between February nineteenth and March twelfth. Let the sign up for help, please contact the township staff and let them know at our phone number. We will provide paperwork for signatures and train you in what constitutes a proper signature. And then we also have a reference to our, uh, website. So we're still working on, uh, talking points from our residents and ensure we can answer all their questions, get all the right information on the website. And that's where we are.
One question I have, um, in the first sentence, what needs to be done? Removal of the council's dry status requires approval by majority of the council residents via a voter referendum.
Okay.
Word speaking, that's probably inaccurate. It requires approval by the people, the number, the majority of people that voted that day.
Yes.
That's the difference.
By, so by majority of, okay.
Removal, yeah, under what needs to be done, first one.
So you, I, I would just say that by majority, so it's always a majority of the people that vote at the time of the vote referendum, I mean, that's always.
You understand the difference, right? If, uh, you have, uh, you know, thirty-five hundred people in the township and you have a fifty percent turnout, yes.
So we can just say by the majority of the voters?
I mean, you could just say majority of, you could say either majority of the voters
Yeah.
Or the township residents who vote at the election.
I, yeah, I know what you're saying. I can drill with it. I'll fill it with a drill.
Yeah, it's a good catch.
Yeah. It's not the township residents, it's the voters. I can fix it.
Uh, one other interesting fact is that, um, the reason we can only have one is Chester County where the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board requires the population to have three thousand people for each liquor license. So since we only have forty-five hundred people in the township, we can only have one. But that will have some room to change, to bend. I'll just give you this example. If you look at, um, the population of Chester County and you divide that by three thousand, it allows you to have a hundred and sixty-six licenses. In reality, we have three hundred and twenty-five. So something has changed to allow more licenses. But for Franklin Township, the first license would be guaranteed by right. Somebody, if we remove the dry status, they could come in, demand it and we would give it to them. But the second, any, anything beyond that, if it can be managed, the board has direct control over yes or no. So we have what I consider strong local control. So we have what I consider strong local control. Chisel Creek could benefit by something like this. No comment.
We're not commenting.
No comment. Anyway, I think it's a monumental task to gather these signatures, so we're gonna endeavor to do it.
Anyone can help us.
So we've got all kinds of ideas how to get people to come in here and sign petitions. I heard in particular about petitioning, the petitioner of the circular later of the petition has to have their name on the back of it. It'd be a registered voter, and they collect the signatures, and then they have to signify to a notary that all these signatures are valid and they collect in a manner appropriate to this effort. So it's a fairly controlled procedure. You just can't go out there and get any old signatures. And they all have to be on the voter registration, they have to be, their name has to be right, no ditto marks, there's all kinds of rules about the petition, so. Okay, I don't have any other comments. Other than the next meeting, we're gonna continue to plan this thing, but it's coming up on us. Okay. Public comment? Any additional public comments?
Sat so quietly through the whole thing.
Well, I might as well not talk.
We don't have to talk.
You don't want to turn.
I don't mind talking. I've been asking you for a couple of years now. I'm actually your neighbor down, I don't know how well you recognize me, but...
Where, where you at?
On Hillcrest.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've known a few times, it's been about a year or so.
I did recognize you, we have talked before.
So I got that nice email, said maybe make one of your New Year's resolutions, come out to a meeting. So I checked that, I'm off the box tonight. It's been something I've wanted to do.
Okay, I appreciate you coming out. What'd you think?
You know, it felt great, I like that it's a small group. Some townships are quite large with their turnout, so. And that last item would be canvassing for signatures, kind of piqued my interest, so I might be able to help out with that a little bit.
Well, we appreciate it, yeah, we reach back, reach back out to them, so. And if somebody, get somebody to go around one neighborhood like Hillcrest or something, that would be great, that's... Generally, I think people, I'm not expecting a lot of opposition to this, but you never can tell.
Still, we work hard on the signatures, you have to go after them.
I'm not sure we're gonna get a tremendous amount of opposition.
And that's February when?
19th to March 12th.
It's the same period of time that you have to solicit for candidates to be on the ballot, so it's a... For a candidate, you only need 15 or 20 signatures for a candidate, but here for this thing, it'd be 558 signatures, so.
Well, it was a big election too, I mean, hey, mathematically, it's an election, so 25% of the big numbers.
Yeah, but if it had been a typical township election where we only had 400 voters, that would have been only...
But we want you to vote, so that was a good thing.
That was good, we have had some very strong participation in the last three elections in this township, so. Which is good. Okay.
Do you want to say anything?
I'm here just, I'm Corporal Wyble. I am new to this area. I just came here in December from Erie at the very other side of the state.
I know where it is.
You know where it is? I think there's a lake out there.
Lake effect snow doesn't hit us down here.
Oh, it hits us. I think they're expecting about two feet this weekend. But I was asked to come and sit in on the township, see if anybody had any concerns, anything they wanted to address with us. I can tell you just from my limited experience, I have not heard of tremendous problem areas in Franklin at all. But like I said, I'm here to see if anybody had any concerns they wanted to address with us, if anything.
We appreciate the reports that we get. We usually get a report, a monthly report from the Barracks on incidents in Franklin, and the interesting part about it is it uses about 45, 50 items on there. There's only like one or two of them that would even generate any concern, so. We're pretty fortunate down here in the activity we have. The biggest issue we have are traffic issues and bad behavior by drivers, but that's...
That's everywhere.
That's everywhere. And but we're very pleased with the support we get from Abendel Barracks. We have essentially no issues with the area. We appreciate your support, we call up there, we get good responses. Jeff does most of the contacting.
Sergeant Brighton's great.
So we have a really good working relationship with the Barracks, so. I couldn't be happier, and I hear no complaints. I mean, and I talk to a lot of people in the neighborhood here, I never hear anybody complaining. Once in a while, we did have some people wanting some police protection here. It was in the last meeting when we were talking about sidewalks in the village.
Oh, there's more traffic here. It's all traffic, it's all traffic.
Look, you can't be everywhere, that's... You know, you can't, you know, you can't afford to station one person at one intersection constantly. That's just not the way it works, so.
Unfortunately, it's the people who are behind the wheel who need to be a little bit more responsible without somebody sitting on their shoulder.
I wish they were, good luck with that.
I know, and that's what we run into as well, and I...
See lots of examples of very bad behavior. Unfortunately.
Corporal Wyble, a question, and it's on the most recent report, which the board will get on Friday, they haven't seen it yet, but there were two incidences of firearms on school property.
Okay. Are you aware of any of that?
There's one that I'm thinking of, and I'm not certain if it is one of the ones that you're concerned with. I don't know if I'm in the right area. Like I said, I'm not familiar completely with the area in general. Was one of them possibly near a bus stop?
It just says firearms on school property.
Okay.
But that's all we get in the reports, we don't get any details.
Okay.
I'd like to know if it was something to really be concerned, I mean...
I have not heard, the closest thing that I have heard, and like I say, I don't know if in fact this is within this area, was a concern that maybe a firearm was dropped out of backpack near a bus stop. And there was some conflicting information as to, A, whether it was in fact a firearm or say a pellet gun.
A pellet.
Or whether it was in fact ever on a school bus or school property. I know there was some conflicting information with respect to that and how the individual acquired it and when, as to whether it was actually on a school property or not. That is certainly something that we can look into specifically. Like I said, this was sprung on me this evening, probably about 40 minutes before the meeting actually started.
Lucky you.
And I was said, my lieutenant said, hey, would you mind? Absolutely not, I would love to do that for you, lieutenant. So she asked me to stop in and sit in on the meeting, and so unfortunately, I don't have a whole lot more information in advance, but that is certainly something that we can look into. And if it was in fact, there is any validity, then that's certainly something that we can try and shed some light on.
Alright, so you lived and worked in Erie for a long time?
Yes, I'm born and raised.
I did some work up there for, I worked up there for about four or five months for General Electric.
Okay.
So I know all about lake effect snows.
Yes. Last year around Christmas, we got five feet. It lasted 36 hours.
We just keep snowing and never stops.
Oh, it's prepared, we might get three inches.
And it'll still be the equivalent of fire.
Well, we're in Chester County.
Yeah, we can't drive normally.
You're talking about the Delaware people. It's a very nice area, very nice area. They have a State Park and Crest High State Park out there.
Yes.
Driving along the coast road there is quite a spectacular sight up there. Well, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? You're on?
One other thing I'll mention, which I'm sure you've heard before, we do always have the prescription Dropbox at our Barracks.
Oh, at your Barracks, you have it, okay.
Yes, it is available for anybody 24/7. It's out in our lobby, and it does actually get emptied on a pretty regular basis, which is generally a good indication that people know it's there and they're trying to be responsible in getting access to it. Disposals of properly, so whether it's in the water supply or...
Not the smartest thing we know.
Exactly. That, or even just having it around where people who've got some substance abuse problems, they might have access to it.
Do you have, I'm sure you, I forget the word, begins with an N, that's for heroin.
Narcan.
Narcan, you have that there?
We do carry Narcan, yes.
And what else would it be, just in case anyone would ask. All the emergency services guys got it. School, I think even the schools now have it. They're talking about it.
It's just an inhaler.
It's a nasal spray application, so it's pretty easy. The other thing about it is that if you apply it and don't need it, there's no harm.
It does work pretty cool.
I, we had a, one of our Cato meetings, we had the Chester County Health Department guy, who's in charge of drugs, and I can't think of his name, and he talked to us about what's going on in the county, and it's pretty bad. He tells us a story about someone being admitted to Chester County Hospital with an overdose, and they treated him with Narcan, and they retained him for a while, but he had another dose of the stuff hidden on him, so he overdosed in the hospital, they had to give him two treatments.
Well, they do tend to get upset when you ruin their high.
Yeah, that's what it was, they complained that they ruined the effect of their drugs, you know. Yes.
And I work as a medic, so I... Sold it quite a few times.
Okay, we're adjourned at 8:10. Thank you for attending.